Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's time to begin tonight's Huntington City Council meeting for April 28th, 2025. The invocation will be led by Rabbi Judd this evening, and we're going to do something a little different with our pledge of allegiance. I've asked Chief Greg Fuller to come up and lead us in the pledge this evening. So at this time, rise if you're able and silence your cell phones.
Works for me. Council members, I am Rabbi R.D. Judd, Rabbi and spiritual leader of Benetia Shalom Congregation, and I am honored to be here to offer this invocation. Ribonoh Shalom, Creator of the universe, we ask your blessing and guidance as members of our city council once again gather to continue the work of building our community. Grant them clear minds as they approach the political, social, and economic issues facing our city. Inspire them to work together on behalf of all citizens of our city, reminding them that no one should be forgotten or ignored, that the needs of the widows, the orphans, and the strangers, those whom we often overlook, are as important as the needs of the most affluent. Fill them with love and respect for each other as they work together to enhance and enrich our city. Give them strength and courage as they continue to improve the welfare of our community. Grant them patience and understanding, reminding them that all of us are created Selam Elohim. We are created in your image. Bless them, their families, and all who engage in the holy work of making our city a safe and welcome place for all. Let us say, "Amen."
My thanks to the Honorable Mayor and the Distinguished Chair for allowing me to come and lead this pledge. During my time away from the city between my stints as fire chief, I had the great privilege to sometimes spend time in the company of the great Herschel Woody Williams, West Virginia's Congressional Medal of Honor recipient. And Woody would often remind us that there's no comma between one nation and their God, and he would always admonish anyone who would pause for that. So it gives me great pleasure in the memory of our good friend and the great Herschel Woody Williams to lead the Pledge of Allegiance and flag as Woody would lead it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Judd.
Ms. Atkins, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Archer?
Present.
Mr. Arthur?
Present.
Ms. Blau absent. Ms. Hawley?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Lehman?
Here.
Ms. Mount?
Here.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Here.
Mr. Shockley?
Present.
Mr. Sweeney?
Absent.
Ms. Walling?
Present.
And we do have a quorum. Item number three is the synopsis of the last meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to propose an amendment.
Yes, ma'am.
Just seems like a small thing, but I think we all want credit when we show up. I actually was not at the last meeting, and it says I was present, and it says Ms. Johnson was absent, and Ms. Johnson was here. I think what happened is they got it flip-flopped from the special call meeting the next night because it was switched. So I'd like to amend the council members present to make it so that Teresa Johnson was present and I, Holly Mount, was actually absent at the last meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Any discussion on the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second, no discussion. Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the amendment is approved.
Now I would move to adopt as amended.
Yes, and then now I make a motion to adopt as amended.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the synopsis is approved as amended. Thank you. Councilwoman Mount. Item number four is reports of the mayor. Mayor Farrell, good evening.
Good evening. Good to be with you all. I have only two items for you today. They are both out of Washington, DC. The first is the Westmoreland Fire Station has finally received the congressional funding has come through, the grant has been fully executed, and we're able to draw down on it. And so our purchasing department now is working on the procurement documents, and it should go out to bid soon. And so we're very excited for all the work that's gone into it. I'm so happy for Chief Fuller that he got to say the pledge and that we're going to get this thing open. So that's exciting. We thank the Congressional Delivigation Center Capito and prior to that, Senator Manchin for helping arrange that. The second item is also about congressional funding. You know, this is the season where they start to look for requests for earmarks, and we've been working very closely with both senators and Congressman Miller on those and what our priorities are. It shouldn't surprise you to know that we've asked for money for flooding, we've asked for some money for HPD and others, and so it's a long road from here. This funding obviously is for FY '26, but they have been very supportive of our requests, and we're hopeful that they will come through. And that's my report for tonight.
Mayor Farrell, thank you. Item number five is the second reading of an ordinance. Ms. Atkins.
An ordinance of council authorizing the mayor to enter into an information sharing agreement with the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency, DHS, FEMA.
Move to adopt.
Second.
There's a motion by Ms. Lehman, a second by Ms. Mount. All right. Good evening.
Good evening. Zane Parsley, Plan and Development. The ordinance before you authorize the mayor to enter into an information sharing agreement with the Department of Homeland Security and FEMA. The information exchanged will be data gathered by FEMA during the February 2025 flood event, and this information will be used to inform our floodplain management techniques, identify significantly damaged homes, and apply for future mitigation awards. This information is critical for us as we pursue appropriate federal assistance for victims, particularly in relation to voluntary acquisition and demolition programs regarding damaged homes, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Parsley?
Thank you.
Ms. Atkins, did anyone from the public sign up for this ordinance?
No.
Any questions of council? I already said that one, I think. All right. And the Public Safety Report, Mr. Arthur?
It's Ali.
Huh?
Are you above us?
No.
What was it?
Public Safety. He's asking for a committee report.
Yeah, we pass and move forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Ms. Atkins, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Blau absent. Ms. Hawley?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney absent. Ms. Walling?
Yes.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
And Mr. Shockley?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved. Item number eight is the first reading of an ordinance, 2025-0-07. Ms. Atkins.
An ordinance of council amending, modifying, and reenacting Article 773, Article 935, Article 951, Article 1741, and Article 1743 of the codified ordinances of the City of Huntington, as revised to clarify the period over which fees are collectible, to clarify that costs of lien are collectible, and to clarify the amount of interest to be charged in liens recorded in collection of fees.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez, good evening.
Good evening. Erica Hernandez, Assistant City Attorney. This ordinance revision involves five separate ordinances, as Ms. Atkins just read. They're from the codes for municipal service fee, refuse service fee, vacant building, and stormwater. This revision codifies certain state laws that the city has already been following, but the ordinances did not make that clear. The changes include acknowledging that the statute of limitations for service fees is five years, that the lien interest rate is the same as the rate charged for judgment interest, that costs such as filing fees with the county court will be collected at the time of payment on liens, and recognizing that penalties no longer accrue once a lien is filed. We...
Yeah, I was waiting for you.
Okay, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to amend. It's my thing tonight when I can't talk. From, I believe it starts in section 935.08 and on throughout the ordinance, we need to replace the words Huntington Sanitary Bard with Huntington Stormwater Utility. I don't know how many times it's in there, but it's just in 935.
Right. I have a second on her motion.
Second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Walling. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the ordinance is amended, and we will move this one to a second reading. Thank you very much. Item number seven is a resolution, 2025-R-34. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to furnish the Huntington Police Department with practice and duty ammunition.
Mr. Archer, move.
To adopt.
Second.
Teresa Johnson may have beat the second. Good evening.
Good evening. Captain Mike Tarnby with Huntington Police Department. The police department requests city council's authorization for Mayor Farrell to contract with Keesler Police Supply, Inc. of Jeffersonville, Indiana, for the purchase of both duty and practice ammunition in the amount of $29,893.17. On March 4th of 2025, the purchasing division placed this project out to bid and received three bids. First was the gun shop, which their bid was $35,732.19. Number two was Keesler Police Supply, their bid was $29,893.17. And number three was Blue Heron Tactical with a bid of $60,690.50. These funds for this purchase will come from the police department's general fund budget. I'm having to answer any questions.
Any questions of members of council? Ms. Atkins, did anyone sign up to speak on this resolution?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. The committee report, Mr. Arthur?
I'd like to move forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the resolution is approved. Item number eight is a resolution, 2025-R-36. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council authorizing the settlement of certain litigation involving the city.
Oh, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Rumbaugh, a second from Ms. Ali Lehman.
Mr. Chair, recognizing that there's a pending motion on the floor, but I would make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to West Virginia Code Section 6-9A-4B to B11 for...
Excuse me, hang on just a second. The public will stay.
Well, they can leave if they want, but anyway...
No, they're going to the mayor's conference chair.
Oh, okay. Okay.
They can stay. It's easier to move us than all of you.
Anyway, this is on the grounds of attorney-client privilege to consider litigation or potential litigation.
Second.
At this time, we are in executive...
We have to vote.
I'm sorry. Give me a second.
I move.
Motion, she second?
Hawley second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we are going to move across the hallway into executive session. Thank you.
I should, we should have coffee.
I think he's catching up now.
Coffee, I'm like.
Monday he's catching up.
Goosey, so.
It's all right. Oh, I hope, I hope not. Got a lot of that down.
Like your face.
They were on the grass field.
We had two on our forty-five.
Well, whether or not you're given the opportunity, it's been fifty, maybe ninety to eighty, maybe fifty to sixty.
You and me, but trying to get my mom's speed, do my dad's speed, get my mom, she's away from the hospital, do her physical therapy, doctor's appointment.
Mr. Chair, I move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are out of the executive session where no decisions were made and no votes were taken. Had a motion and a second. Scott addressed that we went to executive session, questions of council or the public. And committee report.
The administration and finance committee met and voted to forward this to full council with a favorable recommendation.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the resolution is approved. Item number nine is resolution twenty twenty-five dash R dash three nine. Ms. Atkins.
Resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for municipal waste disposal services for the city of Huntington.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Holly Smith Mount and a second by Ms. Sally Lehman. Good evening, Mr. Bates.
Mr. Chairman, members, Mark Bates, Public Works Director. On February fifth, twenty twenty-five, the purchasing division issued a bid seeking municipal waste disposal services for the city. This would cover the drop off of solid waste at a certified landfill. All bids to provide this service were due on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. The service will be a one-year contract starting on May first with the option to renew for four additional one-year terms. City received three bids from two companies for this request. Republic Services, the Sycamore landfill in Hurricane bid thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents per ton. Republic Services, the Green Valley landfill bid twenty-three dollars per ton. And Rumkey of Ohio at the Boyd County sanitary landfill was sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents per ton. We're recommending that we enter into a contract with Rumkey of Ohio for this service and funding for this contract. They'll come from the sanitation trash contracted services line. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Bates and council? Anyone from the public? Anyone signed up, Ms. Atkins?
No, sir.
Committee report?
Yeah, the sanitary sewage and recycling committee met and forwarded to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the resolution is approved. Item number ten is resolution twenty twenty-five dash R dash four one. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Hetzer Realty LLC.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rumbaugh and a second by Ms. Walling. Good evening.
Good evening, Scott Namren, City Attorney. The resolution that you have before you is asking consent for the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Hetzer Realty LLC. The property is located at four one seven Second Avenue. It's one unit of the building. It contains three thousand five hundred and eighty-nine square feet. The use of the property would be for the city to, or excuse me, the Huntington Police Department for storage. The property that was used for storage before is a property that would be used for the proposed emergency shelter. The term of the lease is one year with the option for the city to remove, to renew for additional one-year terms. The cost per square foot is five dollars and sixty-eight cents, which is within the market range for warehouse property within the city. It's actually on the low side. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Namren?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any security cameras or anything for this facility to watch over, anything that's stored by HPD?
There will be security cameras.
Okay.
And they're not provided by the landlord, though.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Namren? Anyone from the public? Committee report?
This went through administration and finance. We met and voted to forward it to full council with a favorable recommendation.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the resolution is approved. Item number eleven is a resolution twenty twenty-five dash R dash four two. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Scott Namren to the position of city attorney. I very enthusiastically move to adopt.
Second.
Ma'am, you gotta help me, there was a tie.
It was me.
I attempted to say it and then.
Okay. And a second by Ms. Mount. And I'll just say that in my tenure being here, Scott's been the city attorney since I started a little over eight years ago. It takes some getting used to with a new attorney. So, Scott, thank you very much. It takes some getting used to with a new attorney, so Scott, thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, Mister Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
In a former life, when I was in private practice and my law firm did some defense work for the city, Mister Dameron, I can confidently say that Mister Dameron is the best city attorney that I worked with.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments from council? Anyone from the public? And the committee report from personnel?
It went through Admin and Finance.
Admin and Finance, sorry.
No.
It didn't go through, it didn't go through.
Oh, I bet it didn't go through last week or last month when I went here.
No, that's why it says assigned at work session.
Got you. My bad.
JK.
All those in favor of reappointing Scott as our city attorney signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome back to the fold, Mister Dameron.
Yay!
Item number twelve is a resolution twenty-two-five dash R dash four-five. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to expend funds received from the West Virginia opioid settlement, distribution for constructing, and equipping the building and grounds located at ninety-six Third Avenue West, Huntington, to be used for the purpose of providing emergency shelter services, integrated homelessness care, and addiction treatment services. Authorizing the mayor to enter into an MOU with Valley Health Services Incorporated for the construction renovation equipment, equipping, and operation of the facility, and authorizing the mayor to redirect previously approved operational funding to the emergency shelter.
Move to adopt.
Second.
You got a motion from Mister Archer and a second from Miss Mount. Mayor Farrell, good evening.
Good evening. As the resolution stated, we're really doing three things. The first is expending funds from the opioid settlement money. The second is entering into an MOU with Valley Health to be our lead community sponsor or partner on this initiative. And then third is to authorize the redirecting the money from the chapel, provide overnight emergency services to the new shelter once it's open. It'll stay with the city mission and the chapel until this new facility is open, at which time we'll then transfer it to Valley Health in order to operate that shelter. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mayor Farrell?
Mister Chair, I have one question that is not substantive at all, and I didn't notice it even in committee. I think it says Valley Health Services, Inc. Am I right about that? Valley, yeah, Valley Health Service, it should be Valley Health Systems, right?
It says.
So it's, it's correct in the body then and not on the agenda?
Yeah, how, in the, in the title, it says Valley Health.
Yeah, and the, the heading of the resolution is incorrect and the body of the resolution is correct. So, I don't know, does it matter, Scott?
It doesn't matter by what, I think you should, go ahead.
Okay, then I'll, I'll make a motion that we.
Can I say for service or no service?
Yeah, it's, I, I make a motion that we amend the caption of this resolution to refer to Valley Health Systems, Inc. as opposed to services.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to amend. Any discussion on the motion?
I'll just, in fact, there are actually four systems in the state of West Virginia Indian Valley.
Yeah.
They're all my customer and it's very confusing.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Chair, I do have.
Any other questions of council for Mayor Farrell?
Chair, I have some questions. Mayor Farrell, during committee, you did a, thank you so much for answering all my questions. So I just kind of want to go over some of the stuff that we've learned for the new attendees here that might not have been here during the committee so that they can learn all the questions that they might have to be answered. So, for example, the building that has been picked has already been vetted for human use.
Correct.
That's incredibly important, super awesome. The other thing is that by voting on this ordinance, the council is also voting to allocate three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-six towards the city mission, which previously had not been voted on yet. So that will, in effect, happen here and they will get to use that money until this new program opens up. And then whatever remaining funds are there would be redirected to the new building.
Yes, let me, again, just to be super clear, you're authorizing three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for FY twenty-six to be spent on emergency overnight services.
Yes.
It'll initially be spent presumably with the city mission as long as they're running the shelter.
Yes.
And then when the new shelter is open, it'll transfer over to Valley Health.
Great. And you also clarified that the language at the bottom of the bill, which says that we're redirecting the funding that had been previously provided to the Huntington City Mission, does not include the HERSA grant or CDBG funding. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so we need no clarifying amendment language because this resolved language at the bottom relates to the whereas language at the top of the resolution. That's a, that's kind of a legal question.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it does. And also, the actual resolution itself says for the monthly operation of the low-barrier shelter. The very last sentence.
Okay. And I feel like we answered so many questions. And I appreciate it, all of the answers seem to line up exceptionally well. And, oh, that was the last one. Can you explain why it's being fast-tracked again?
Yeah, just the urgency of trying to get something open before winter, right? There's, with contractors and our community partners, we're trying to expedite all of these activities so that the clients receive the best services as soon as possible.
All right, oh, and that was another thing. The services listed in this resolution are not the all-encompassing services. There will be a future MOU that is forthcoming that can kind of, that will describe the long-term commitment of Valley Health Systems. And we have broad language with every intention of Valley Health Systems implementing emergency overnight shelters, even though it's not in this resolution. We will have additional documentation forthcoming, which will come before council.
If you're authorizing the mayor to enter into an MOU with them, and once we have that signed, I will certainly bring it back to you to show you what was signed.
Thank you so much.
Mister Chair, I have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I think you all know, and I've made pretty clear in working within homeless services that I wholeheartedly support any services that help unsheltered folks. And this project and other projects, literally, it's people's lives on the line. So with that, what notice will be given to the city mission of completion of the project? And when we say emergency overnight shelter, will the city mission still be receiving funding through the summer for the overnight shelter? Or will that just be for emergency, like cold weather? Or will the overnight shelter at city mission still continue until this project starts or is completed?
Yes. The chapel will continue to be in operation until we have the new shelter open. And our commitment to the city mission is to give them ample notice, whatever that may be. So we have a seamless transition, so no one will have to be out on the streets for a night. We will notify them and then in an orderly fashion, open the new one and make sure that there is a very seamless transition from one to the next.
Okay. Have there been plans developed for the new location, like there was for the other new low-barrier shelter, yet that is accessible to any of us to see?
No.
Okay. Is there a timeline? I hate to use winter is coming, but we have seven months.
Yes.
You know, to get this project complete or continue with overnight shelter. So is there, I know it's hard to project, especially with getting supplies in, but is there any type of timeline?
The only thing I'll say is that we intend to have this open before winter. One of the reasons we're fast-tracking it is so we can move as quickly as possible to get it open.
Awesome. And also, in your inauguration speech, you talked about veteran homeless services. Is this going to be partnering with that? Or like, this is encompassing everything that you were talking about previously before?
This is not everything encompassing. What you're referring to is the Veteran Homeless Pilot Project, where we're going to try to get to functional zero homelessness for veterans first. And that is a separate effort. This will certainly be a component of it.
Right.
Right, where we might be the first touch with folks at this new facility. But it is a separate and distinct effort that we'll launch hopefully soon.
Awesome. I think that's all the questions that I had.
All right.
Chair, I came up with one more question. I apologize. I forgot to ask this in the committee. How much has been just, how much is in the opioid settlement fund currently? So that we have kind of a percentage concept of what we're allocating?
I don't have that exact number. I think it's somewhere close to three million dollars. I think the total that we're going to receive over the course of the fourteen years-ish is about six million dollars. Don't hold me to the numbers exactly. But rough order of magnitude.
So I heard you say like three-ish million.
What we have now.
All right, and, and this will allocate potentially one-point-three-five million to homeless services in our community.
Correct.
Out of that fund. Thank you so much.
Mister Chair, I'd just like to say something quickly. I truly appreciate the partnership and the work on this. I, you know, there are a number of us on council for whom this is a very personal endeavor. And so I, I really appreciate this. And as we're talking about the availability of funding, you know, it's, I think that we have a real opportunity here because besides the opioid money that came into the city, we also have the West Virginia First Foundation. And if we are able to build and establish something that is as groundbreaking and innovative and wonderful as I fully expect it will be, then it will be an excellent opportunity and an excellent project for us to seek future funding. It's much easier to get, yeah, it's much easier to get the money when you already show you can do a good job.
That's exactly right. We hope, we hope that's exactly right.
Yes.
Mister Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sick, I have laryngitis from allergies, I promise I wouldn't come here and infect everyone. But just quickly, the other day I, I had an opportunity to chat with one of our unsheltered neighbors. I was walking down the street and he was there and I chatted with him, he's actually a veteran. And I talked to him a little bit about, like, where do you go at night? What do you, you know? And I think that one thing that gets kind of lost in the shuffle is that, yeah, the chapel is a place to sleep at night, but it's not adequate. And this will be more than adequate. I asked him, you know, do you go to the chapel every night? Do you know about Harmit? And he was like, yeah, yeah, yeah. And he said, sometimes he doesn't go to the chapel because it's so crowded and you have to sleep holding on to your stuff so that no one will take it. And that if, if you get up to go to the restroom, someone's going to take your spot. It is equipped for about thirty people to sleep in and on the coldest nights, we've had more than double that. So just to reiterate, I know that we're, but I just felt like I wanted to share that because I just talked to him the other day. He was lovely and I told him that hopefully we can get him some help soon because he is a veteran and he was in Desert Storm. So I thanked him for his service and it was a nice chat. And I'm really, like Sarah said, just really appreciative because this is, I think we're going to have a really something special and fix a major problem that other communities have not quite figured out how to fix. Thank you.
Just as a comment on that, the building that the city mission is in the process of constructing would also address.
Oh, yeah.
That.
Yep.
Just so.
Yeah.
We're all like, okay. So theoretically, they would be open by winter if they get their funding. So I think they're still out approximately seven-hundred thousand of funding from this fiscal year that they haven't received. So I also want us to remember, I'm very excited about this project, but I don't want us to forget all of the work and the promises that City Hall has helped the city mission with. And I hope that we continue. I'm really grateful to the mayor for keeping those promises and working with them. It's incredibly important. And to think that our city is going to have multiple services on both ends of town, it's really beautiful. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Atkins, we had one sign up to speak.
Two.
Two.
Connie Beatty.
I know the drill.
Ms. Beatty, you have three minutes.
Connie Beatty, two-three-six Ninth Avenue. I just wanted to thank the mayor and city council and all the partners that are working on this project. And I think it's, it's wonderful and I think we're blessed to have Dr. Smurl and everything that she's also doing. I have, I've been working with a guy that has spent some nights in the chapel and he described it much like Holly described it. And I'm excited that we can help a lot of people and it's because all of you are working together. So thank you.
Mister Chair, real quick, did we vote on that resol, I know we voted for the resolution of the name for Valley Health, but do we vote on the resolution itself?
We're not, we're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Oh, okay, sorry. Public speaking, I thought it went to Goodwill here.
It's okay, I do it too, thank you. I mean, I get, I get put in check too, so, I like, because I overstep, so. Ms. Atkins?
Um, let's see, Angela Harshbarger.
I think I've done it twice this meeting, so where I've jumped bullet points.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Angela Harshbarger and I live at twenty-five, twenty-nine Third Avenue in Huntington. I have not only watched the homeless overnight shelter play out, but I was a part of it. I was with the Huntington City Mission for two and a half years. The folks that are out there that are in shelter have a special place in my heart. I know their names. I know what they've gone through. I know what they struggle with. And we definitely have to give them some help. But I'm not here for that. I'm going to put my, I'm a Kiwanis member hat on. I am third generation of the Downtown Kiwanis and we sponsor.
Ma'am, this is to the, to the resolution.
It is.
May I get there, sir?
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you went totally left.
Oh.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. So I am third generation of the Downtown Kiwanis. And since nineteen-thirty, the Downtown Kiwanis has supported the Kiwanis Daycare Center. And it happens to be located at seventy-one Washington Avenue. I am very worried because I have heard the argument of these folks in this town hurting our downtown business. Now, look, I'm not afraid of them and I'm a single chick. But we have a daycare center that partners with the United Way, the Campbell County Board of Education. We run a four-K, a four-pre-K program out of there. We accept Lincoln. We are licensed to have ninety-eight children from ages six weeks to twelve years old in our daycare. We actually partner with the city of Huntington because the land that it sits on belongs to the city of Huntington. It was donated to us when the city of Huntington in nineteen-thirty realized that people needed dependable daycare. So I am here to say, do I think the homeless shelter needs to be down there? I don't know the answer to that. But what I do know the answer is, all of the reasons you told us we needed to get it out of downtown Huntington, how does that change by putting it on ninety-six Virginia Avenue or Third Avenue West? We have a daycare, a safe, clean daycare that parents can bring their children to and know they're safe and well cared for. Does that change with that shelter basically one block over? As people are trying to unload and load their children? In Huntington, we ain't got a lot of elbow room. So you have a daycare center that's right there on the street that people have to get in and out of their cars. And again, look, I don't have a problem. I'm not afraid. But this daycare is very important to my heart. My grandfather's COUs was a major part of this daycare for, well, from nineteen-seventy-nine until he passed in the two thousands. It is important to my mother, it's important to me. My mother was a single mom. Without daycare, she would not have gotten her degree, she would not have gotten her masters, and she would not have been able to support her children. Daycare right now is under attack for funding. And I'm asking you to remember this little daycare that will take care of ninety-eight children. As you fast-track, it took how many years? As you fast track, it took how many years? Two and a half years to fight over what was going on on Seventh Avenue, not near a school? And all of a sudden, bam, now we're moving. So I'm asking you to remember a very important part of Huntington, 1930. And I'm asking you to remember that people need daycares. They need to be comfortable putting their children there. And I don't think any reminder, you remembered that one block over, it's right here. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the public? Committee report, Ms. Walling?
The Administration and Finance Committee met and voted to forward this to full council with a favorable recommendation.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, voting on the resolution as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. And that brings us to item number 13, Good and Welfare. I want to remind everyone from the public on this portion that all questions and comments will be directed at the chair. And this is your time to talk, our time to listen. And Ms. Atkins?
Matthew Lebo.
Mr. Lebo, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Lebo, living at 1628 Sixth Avenue in Huntington, here to speak about the ICE raids in Huntington. "That which is not just is not law," such were the words of abolitionist William Lloyd Garrison. "Justice is the most sacred pillar of our nation." "The Declaration of Independence stating we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it." Such is the crisis we now face as plainclothes feds drag our neighbors away to CICOT, the concentration camp in El Salvador, where the Trump administration illegally deported Kilmar Abrego Garcia, charged with no crime. This is the concentration camp where our beloved representatives Riley Moore and Carol Miller recently vacationed. ICE is now even attacking constitutionally protected speech with the detentions of Palestinian peace activists Mahmoud Khalil and Mosin Madawi of, at Columbia University. We are in the midst of an unprecedented constitutional crisis. The Fifth Amendment holds that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. The Fourteenth Amendment holds that no, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. So long as due process is denied to anyone in this country, the only thing standing between any one of us and a concentration camp in El Salvador is whether a handful of feds claim that we're not citizens. Our ancestors rebelled against King George upon some of the same offenses the Trump administration now celebrates. To quote the Declaration of Independence, "He has endeavored to prevent the population of these states, for that purpose obstructing the laws for naturalization of foreigners." He has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing his assent to laws for establishing judiciary powers. He has combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction foreign to our constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, for depriving us in many cases of the benefits of trial by jury, for transporting us Beyonce's to be tried for pretended offenses. Bear in mind that the vast majority of those sent to El Salvador have no criminal record or even charges. Per CBS News, on April 6th, three-quarters of the men renditioned to CICOT have no known criminal record. Even a state judge in Milwaukee was arrested on Friday for daring to use the legal system to protect immigrants. For the U.S. Holocaust Memorial Museum, quote, "What distinguishes a concentration camp from a prison is that it functions outside of a judicial system. The prisoners are not indicted or convicted of any crime by judicial process." This is the risk we now face in Huntington. Many of our friends, neighbors, classmates, and coworkers are being targeted by an immigration system vowing to violate their rights. We've all heard of the raid last week at El Tanapa and saw videos of the plainclothes ICE agents last Friday dragging students, dragging residents near the AD Lewis Center into unmarked vans and SUVs. A grad student at Marshall nearly faced unlawful removal but for the swift intervention of the ACLU. Let me be clear. If you dress up in plainclothes and drag someone into an unmarked van, that's not an arrest, that's a kidnapping. If you remove someone from the country without, against their will without due process, that's not deportation, that's human trafficking. If you send someone not charged or convicted of any crime to a slave labor camp beyond the authority of any legal jurisdiction, that's not justice, that's the Gestapo. Just following orders is not an admissible excuse, just as the Nazis hanged at Nuremberg. You all have sworn under oath to uphold the Constitution and that oath supersedes statute. What I ask of the council and of everyone here is to recognize when, is to consider what we can do as individuals, as government officials, and as a community to protect our neighbors. We must donate to funds like the ACLU fighting for immigrant rights. We must raise awareness and teach people their rights. Fundamentally, too, we need to recognize when civil disobedience is required to protect human rights. We're not talking about law enforcement agencies anymore. We're talking about agencies dissolving the rule of law. I urge the council to read up on the 2023 House Bill 2008, the state prohibition on sanctuary cities. This is a law that exists to coerce you to violate your oath to the Constitution, such as Section 1515.3 compelling law enforcement to comply with federal immigration detainers even without a warrant. I urge the council to research potential loopholes or legal challenges to overturn this law and to identify workarounds both as a council and as individuals to better protect our rights, such as donations to legal defense organizations and organizing Know Your Rights campaigns. This isn't about left or right, Democrat or Republican. This is about liberty or death. Our friends, our neighbors, our classmates, our coworkers will die. History will remember the collaborators and enablers of the crimes against humanity our taxes are funding. And every single one of us will have to live the rest of our lives with the knowledge of what we did and didn't do right now. How you want to be remembered and how you want to remember yourself is up to you, but history is watching.
Well timed.
Spot on, yeah. Spot on. Ms. Atkins?
Gina Turner.
Ms. Turner, good evening.
Good evening. Gina Turner, 1438 Lynn Street, 25701. Normally I'm up here about other people, but I have a problem on my road, guys. On Lynn, I'm right at the corner of McVeigh and Lynn, okay? I've had two different vehicles hit parked in front of my own house. I don't want a driveway. There is land right there at the corner of McVeigh and Lee, Lynn and McVeigh. It's a 90-degree turn right now with a stop sign. There's land there that could be, I don't know, maybe cut away to make it a nice curve. Doesn't help that my neighbor got three extra vehicles that are parked on the road, but that's nothing you guys can do about that. However, I, guys, I was homeless three years ago and I just got a 2020 Subaru and it has been hit. I am not happy, very upset. I love that car. You're not supposed to love things. I love that car. So if like, there's any kind of planning committee, infrastructure committee, something that can look into this and stop my cars, that's two, two different vehicles, y'all, two different vehicles. One I hadn't even made a payment on yet before it got hit. It's part of the reason it got traded in for the Subi. So like, if there's any way this could be looked into somehow, I didn't know how to report it on the 311 app, but I can take pictures and stuff and bring them next time, make this all fancy and like, displays and stuff. Could please help me somehow because I'm not going to be the only car hit there. There is now one of the neighbor's extra cars now parks behind me, so they're bound to get hit soon, too. Also, that road is too narrow for trailers. Okay, thank you.
If you have a minute, ma'am?
Yes.
After the meeting?
Yes.
I'll be more than happy to talk to you.
Yes.
Our at-large representatives will talk to you as well.
Yes.
Pictures are worth a thousand words. Ask Lisa and Barbara. I send them pictures of, I could say it and describe it, but a picture does it's due. So, so yes, we'd be more than happy to discuss that with you.
Thank you.
Not to put you on the spot. Ms. Atkins?
Lenny Sundell Stewart.
Good day, councillors, mayor, guests, et cetera, et cetera. I was, I'd like to take the usual perch to hype up whatever amenity I like this week. But that was before multiple people were taken from our community by immigration officials this week. And I put officials in quotes, not entirely certain if they were actual officials, not seen or heard where they've been sent, from home, work to Louisiana, or El Salvador, or Rwanda. This government is apparently now paying foreign countries with dubious-to-be-genous civil rights, human rights records to hold people being essentially abducted off American streets right now. Our immigration enforcement apparatus is currently flaunting multiple court decisions, straight up to the Supreme Court, to return wrongly removed persons that have been sent to prisons, again, both here and apparently abroad. And it's a matter of public record at this point that not only are the majority of these persons being removed not acting against the law, they're being held under false pretenses, they are being taken, going to and from immigration hearings. Some of these people are American citizens and still being held in detention. There was at least one person who is, was caught on body camera, that they got the wrong person and took them anyway. Now, in addition, and I'm touching on a lot of the stuff that Matt touched on here a bit ago. There's others that are being detained because of exercising their First Amendment rights, not exclusive to citizens on American soil and cruising persons taken while, yeah, I'm skipping ahead on myself here. Apologies there. And the federal government has begun revoking student visas under these justifications. This is all taking place, again, without the extension of one of the most fundamental rights to this country, that of due process of law, which is demanded of our Constitution to all people, not all citizens, all people. I'm aware, as Matt said, there is a state law on the books that restricts the ability of local officials to oppose immigration efforts. However, given that these efforts have been determined, again, by no less than the Supreme Court, by unanimous, by unanimous decision even, to be blatantly unconstitutional, I believe the actions of the last week demand that we, as a community, do everything that we can to protect our members, our neighbors, from what has to be considered a rogue agency. There are multiple immigrants and nationalities just on my block and I'm sure, certain everyone else is, you know, are they next? You know, I worry, I worry about that more than I would like to. And it's up to us to ensure that our neighbors and our neighborhoods are safe right now, so.
Anyone else, Ms. Atkins?
No, sir.
Anyone else from the public? All right, at that time, the public portion is closed. I will start over here with Ms. Stacy Jo-Holly.
I have nothing. Yes. I'm excited to announce, I think it's this Saturday, is that the Renaissance Festival is coming to downtown Huntington. I think this is the first time a Renaissance Festival has been, well, maybe not the first time, but in a very long time that I can remember, that we're going to have all sorts of strange, medieval, cool, nerdy fantasy things. I don't know, knights in shining armor, Shakespearean-type reenactments. Maybe there'll be a horse. Maybe there'll be a unicorn. I'm not sure. I bet there's going to be a petting zoo. There might even be like a turkey leg. I always associate that with Ren Fairs. I am super excited for it and I hope that you all will check it out. I feel like it's a nominal fee to get in. I bet, I bet one of the, Sarah or Holly have more information about it to share. Sorry? It's $25 for adults and probably less, and 10 for children. And maybe they can give more specifics about the time. But if you, hopefully the weather's going to be great. This is first for downtown Huntington in a long time. Go check it out. It should be a lot of fun. And that's it. Thank you.
We moved it from that other city a little farther, up 64, to Huntington, so please make us proud. And the proceeds benefit Harmony House. And the Adventure Zone, the McElroy Boys are going to be signing autographs in costume for the first and only time, I've been told. I intended to talk about something much more serious, though. I'm sure that we've all seen the blue pinwheels around town. I've seen lots of, lots of them on my social media as well. They are the symbol for Prevent Child Abuse Month. April has been Prevent Child Abuse Month and we are nearly at the end of that, but we would be remiss if we did not recognize the people who are doing that very important and emotionally difficult work of keeping our kids safe. So again, April is Prevent Child Abuse Month. And thank you to everyone from, you know, foster parents to volunteers to court-appointed special advocates, all the people who are doing that critical work to keep our kids safe. Thank you all so much.
Ms. Arthur?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to say that I could not be more proud of the joint effort for low-barrier shelter. It shows what we can do when we do actually work together. This will also make Huntington the leader in the state for services and facilities like this.
Jason, that's on the agenda.
You're right. Sorry.
Yes.
I also wanted to say congratulations to the great region of Westmoreland in the moving forward with the new fire station. Thank you very much. Thank you to all. How about that?
It wasn't on the agenda. The mayor talked about it.
He did. You're right. Yeah, yeah.
Celebrate. All good things. So I can't see Lenny without giving him a shout out for that one time he saved my son's retainer. Really did save me a lot of money, so thank you. Gina, I'm very proud of you, but on that point of what Gina made, we get this complaint in various parts of the city and I think it's because we're seeing, and it's terrifying as me as someone who's about to have a teenager in a few weeks, we're seeing more children get cars and other people who are living in the house. So we are seeing an uptick in the amount of cars owned by a household. I don't have a solution, sorry, but I do have a suggestion and that's just be a good neighbor. Watch where you're parking. Watch your speed. Watch for Subarus and other cars, which takes me to my next point. It's getting warmer out. Safety, safety, safety. Watch for kids. Watch for people on bikes. Watch for pets, walkers. Don't drive distracted. Just be aware that there are going to be more people out and about and it's always nice to see. Our city is so lovely when the, when the trees start to green up and everything. So just be aware and always, 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 I issue this warning once a year. But you guys, some of you are new, so you might not have heard it. A few years ago, my son was in a very, very bad scooter accident in Spring Hill Cemetery. He was on his scooter and he lost control going down the big hill. Everyone here knows what I'm talking about. He was wearing a helmet because I am absolutely a nut about helmets. Never, ever, ever let your child go out on their bike or scooter without a helmet. I can tell you that if he had not been wearing a helmet, that would have been a very bad day for us. We had to throw the helmet away. It was that badly damaged. He landed, skidded across his face, went up, stood on his head for a hot second, and then tumbled. There was a lot of blood. It was very scary, but luckily he's fine. But I use that to say, you never know that one time. So please always wear a helmet. Safety. Let's keep everyone safe. Just a couple more things. The Huntington, of course, the night that I can't speak. The Huntington Children's Museum had a very fabulous event this past weekend. It was a dueling piano. I will tell you that 10 years ago, if someone would have told me, 10 years from now, you're going to be sitting in an old reclaimed factory that is absolutely fabulous, it was at West Edge, watching dueling pianos at a fundraiser for an already existing children's museum, I would have called you a liar. I just am really impressed by the amount of things that our city, we're not a big city, but we do really big things and I'm really proud of us. It was a fabulously executed event. Part of the reason I can't speak is not just allergies, but because I was belting out piano man like the best of them. So, you know, I'm, they've been open less than one year and they've had over 20,000 visitors. That little building. I mean, it's just, it's so, I'm so proud of them and so impressed with what they've done. So check it out. Season passes or year passes, make a great gift if you're interested in experiences, not things. If it's within your reach, that's definitely something. What was really cool is that the tips, if everyone is on dueling piano, you give them money and you give them a song and they'll play your song if you, you know, up the ante a little bit. They're using that money for passes for children in our community who don't have the means to go there. So they will be giving them to children at the mission at Harmony House. I forget what else they said. The Boys and Girls Club perhaps, I think, was one of them. But the organizations that serve the underprivileged children in our community, that's what that money's going for. And I thought that was really beautiful that they, they thought about the kids in the community. And then the Ren Fair, yes, there is going to be a catapult. And you can, you can yeet a tomato to your heart's desire. It's from 10 to 7 at Harris Riverfront Park. $25 for adults, $10 for kids. Sawbones is another podcast. They're going, I think, actually record an episode during the time. There's going to be merch. I don't want like someone walking around flaying. I've never been to one. A belly dancer. one, a belly dancer, all kinds of really cool stuff for a really great cause. I recommend coming down. I, part of the merch that we're having are little inflatable horses on sticks. Ironically, it's also the Kentucky Derby that day. My goal is to have people gallivanting around the city on these inflatable horses on sticks, regardless of whether they're celebrating Ren Fair or the Kentucky Derby, so watch for the horses. It's gonna be a really fun event. The weather looks good, maybe, so far, so come check it out and thank you for the time.
Mr. Arthur?
Nothing.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes. Saturday was, I mean, there was all kinds of things that, that happened. Thanking Sarah for the invitation to the Golden Girls brunch, the hats-off, traditional Derby brunch. It was wonderful to, to go and, and take part in that. And then that evening, I'm still thinking about the Cardigy-Woodsen Memorial Foundation Dinner. Man, Cardigy-Woodsen's a founder of Black History Month. It was very powerful. It was a beautiful reminder that intersectionality matters and that all of our struggles and stories and dreams are connected. And that leadership isn't just about titles, it's about service. It's about lifting others up and making sure that no one gets left behind. And I think that that is such a powerful message. I'd also like to thank the Sunrise Group in Huntington for their cleanup efforts this past Saturday, or Sunday, at Harris Riverfront Park, that they are a truly inspiring group of young people. This Friday, Facing Hunger Food Bank is doing their Empty Bowls. It's probably one of my favorite events. Marshall University School of Art and Design creates bowls and they sell the bowls for $20 a bowl. And one bowl is 180 meals. That helps out multiple different counties, the City of Huntington. It's truly wonderful. And also, we have our Firefighters Memorial, May 2nd is at 11:00 AM, I'm thinking, noon? Okay, just wanted to mention that as well. And also, yeah, the ACLU does post information about knowing your rights. We have, do have Cinco de Mayo coming up, so let's really support our neighbors for, with all good intentions. And knowing your rights is just something that we should all know. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Couple things for me. One, I'd still like to continue to give Vice Chair Todd Sweeney well wishes, you know, as he recovers. And two, I had something really cool that I enjoy to do. A couple weeks ago, a gentleman named Ryan, who's a communications student at Marshall University, reached out to me and he was doing a class project. As you know, if you've been to Marshall, just about every class that you take has some sort of group project. And I want to give a shout-out to Ms. Jan Rader. His project for his class was on homelessness and, and things that they could do. And they had to do a mock project, they didn't actually have to implement it, but they had to do all the research, do all the interviews, do all the, the mock stuff leading up to present it to their class. To see these two gentlemen that came in from the class, they were kind of in awe when they walked into City Hall, it was their first time in here. I have to give Ryan a little bit of a hard time, 'cause when I told him that I was gonna ask Jan Rader to join me, she is truly an expert in what is going on in Huntington in regards to homelessness, substance use disorder, things of that nature. He came in and he looked at Jan and he said, "I got so excited I had to watch the documentary." So, he was, he was in awe when he came in here, but it was, it was a great event. Mr. Jason Arthur joined us as well when we went in and helped them with their class project. And I'm, I'm always happy and eager to, to help Marshall University students. I've been back on campus and spoke on multiple occasions. Just helping, helping young people, they get their, their good grades and, and good experience out here in our community and with our city council was wonderful. But with that, that's all I've got.
Move to adjourn.
Yes, ma'am.